Specifically, I didn't necessarily think that it would work particularly well with review of the strategies necessarily. But I mean, I think assuming people have reviewed the strategies at this point, we could take that approach. I don't know who put that in or not.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just hand it over to either one of you who wants to discuss the strategies and goals.
Okay, that's cool. Let me share my screen really quickly.
So we haven't gone over the strategies yet?
Not as, not as a group, not with the larger group.
Okay.
As a, as a group, we did the aspirations and the goals. Because I really couldn't go through and compile the strategies until we had the goals, which we did. So then I went through and compiled them to make this draft for you guys to consider.
And so just to take a kind of 30,000 view with this. The working group met, this is back in June, I feel like, and we worked through the implementation strategies document and sort of reworked some of the structure there. And we collapsed things down to a single aspiration, reshuffled some of the goals to better group them under that single aspiration. And we generally left the strategies in place. I think the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie and Marcella, but I think our thinking was at the time that the strategy seemed to be in pretty good shape. And so I think our preliminary thinking was, was they were probably in a good spot to be able to release to the public. And then we would do some further refining of those strategies, strategies based on that public feedback, you know, at that point. You know, so with that said, as we can walk through some of these strategies, you know, like I said, I think that they're in pretty good shape. I think there's one strategy that I had some questions about, which is number 16, which is the development of a carbon sequestration management plan. I just, it seems, I'm not sure if it is a medium resource type of undertaking. And it seems a little thin to me, but you know, I'm certainly not opposed to leaving it in right now and see how, what sort of public comments we get in response to it. Other than that, I think that generally the Parks Commission, the Conservation Commission, and the other groups that worked on this have done a pretty good job of identifying some pretty high value strategies. Most significantly, I think the mapping strategies that are at the front end of this list, I think, you know, have a lot of value going forward and is really sort of a good springboard to, for all the other strategies that they want to pursue going forward. So I think that's, again, that's a very broad sort of overview of, I think, the subcommittees view of the strategy section right now. But if anybody wants to talk about any of this stuff in more detail, let's add that in.
So I guess I can mention real quick, the first three obviously are all kind of tied together. The first one being the inventory and then that leads to the mapping program and the development constraints mapping program. It was, there were a couple of ways this could have been boxed. You know, we talked about all the five Ps, you know, you can do planning, permits, programs, policies, and projects. And so that, we classified these as programs for the mapping programs rather than a, than a plan or a one-time study. Because they, they envision the natural resource inventory being an ongoing, having a cycle to it where they're routinely going through and updating the inventory. And as inventory updates, the mapping that comes out of it, whether it's a conservation map or a development constraints map, would have this rolling update as well. So that's why we kind of boxed them as, as programs rather than say a one-time conservation map and a one-time development constraints map. That's why they're really classified as programs, but it could obviously go either way. But that's, that's why it is classified the way it is. And then I think a lot of the other ones are, are kind of make sense. The carbon sequestration one that you pointed out was specifically targeted by Alec, the Parks Director. He, he want, he felt that if we've, we have the parks and we have the land in Berlin, a lot of land in Berlin that we have forest management. And so he felt that with the ed, with the energy plan, that we could get some credit for our forest management, especially if we adopt the forest management strategy that increases the amount of carbon being sequestered in those parks, that we could then help out our energy plan goals. I don't know what that is, but I do think it would probably take a study, which would take a little bit more money. You know, high, medium, low, the low cost projects, I think, go up to $1,000. So it certainly wouldn't be that, which is why it's a medium resource. And I have it as a medium priority, obviously could be adjusted. We have a lot of high and a lot of medium priorities and probably could benefit by having some of these. Just because it's low priority on the plan doesn't mean it's not important. It just means that as we prioritize what's the most important thing to get done first, it may be something that gets bumped down. But again, as you, as you point out here, and it may be something we wait here from the public on and decide whether it needs some adjusting at that time. But that's the history of that one.
That's, that's a helpful explanation. It was just unclear to me, given what was on paper, what the sort of scope of the plan was. I, but that seems a lot more tailored to what the Parks Commission is sort of geared towards opposed to a broader sort of citywide, you know, sequestration management plan, which I don't know what the overall scope would be, so.
I wonder if there would be, if it's more of like, if we aren't sure what the forest management practices would be to maximize carbon sequestration, it might be good to like, figure out what that would be first and then decide if that's what we want to do, depending on other priority uses for the forested areas, given that at least some in the city have trails and stuff.
And I guess I'll just say that, you know, Alex is way smarter about this stuff than I certainly am. So I'll defer to his judgment and what he thinks is possible.
Maybe we should just call it a program instead of a plan. Knocks it into a more manageable sort of feeling.
Yeah, I guess I just, I don't know enough about what would come out of that. It feels like we're already, my assumption is that what would come out of that plan in terms of strategies would be already things we were doing. I don't know what else we could do that we're not already thinking about. I guess that's the point of assessing it, but I, I'm not sure what those things would be, like conserve more land or other things that we're already doing.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to come down to how we, how we manage the plan, how we manage our forest land. I think there, it's not simply a matter of not cutting down the trees, but if you manage the trees and manage the forest in a certain way, then you, you can end up with more carbon being stored.
Yeah, I think.
I'm not completely familiar with how it works either, so.
Yeah, maybe, we may just want more information on like, maybe if we, we could probably wait on this. But if we wanted to decide, if we wanted to change it to a priority level, it might be good to understand what the current priorities for those forested areas are. And then how compatible that would be for the forest or for carbon sequestration. I don't think it's bad, like in and of itself would be interesting data that, no. I just don't know if we're like prepared to change our priorities, because I don't know what those priorities are.
My thing at this point is, is like, let's put it out for public comments. See if we can circle back around Alex, get a better handle on what the thought process is on it. And we can make whatever adjustments we need to based on that and any public input.
I know, makes sense.
Okay, are we feeling good about this?
I don't know if we've been, how consistent we've been, but in some cases, we've been, I think we've been approving these just to, not necessarily to approve them that they won't be changed in the future, but just that they're done. I don't know if we want to do that or just agree that it's done. And I can go through and move it up next.
Anybody feeling inclined to make a motion or say? Nope, okay.
Oh, sure, I'll move. Are we moving approval of just the goals and strategies or?
It's whatever you want. I mean, I think that the, the thinking right now, I mean, the, the aspirations and goals we've sort of settled on, we're looking just specifically at the strategies piece right now. And I think it's just we're deciding on sort of moving it along, you know, sort of handing it off to Mike to kind of get the ball rolling, get it into the public domain for comments and whatnot.
Yeah, I'm fine moving approval of the strategies to take it to the next step.
Okay, before we, before we do that, just want to give everyone a last chance if there are any other strategies that they wanted to point out or to discuss more. Okay, so everybody's super comfortable? Okay, so we have a motion from Ariane to approve the goals, aspirations, and strategies. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second.
I think, I think Aaron, I think I had one, one change on the goals. If you can click over to the goals tab. I don't think anyone will have an issue with this. I struck what used to be number three. We had approved it before, but when I went through and did all of the strategies, there really weren't strategies supporting this goal. And I think it's something that we do anyways. I don't think we need to have a goal that states we're going to maintain strong relationships with our, with groups and organizations. So I think we can remove that as a goal, because it didn't have strategies, just so people don't think I'm doing things without kind of letting you guys know that you guys had talked about approving that goal. But it'll, it'll go away. I think they'll still do it, but it just won't be in the plan.
Yeah, they, I forgot, we had discussed this a little bit at the last meeting, but that's the one we're getting in a quorum, so.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, so we can proceed. All in favor of approving the goals, aspirations, goals, and strategies as they are now? Say hi.
Hi.
You opposed? Okay, so that, that lets us move on to the chapter and Aaron, take it back.
So this was the document that I've shared last week. I think we had discussed the, the working group had thought that maybe a more efficient way to go about, or just an efficient way to go about doing this would be to just put it out there, give everybody a week new review. This is just a reworking of the chapter text. Mike had done a first draft, it was structured pretty well. Marcel and I had just gone in, made some sort of line level changes across the board. The initial first draft is still in the, is in the drive as a separate document. I think there's ways to even look and see what the changes are. I came around to do that in Google Docs, but long story short, haven't received any comments or any suggested edits on this document. So I'm going to assume that we're generally okay with it. But obviously, if anybody wants to talk about it, please do. I think Mike did a really good job of structuring the chapter text and sort of getting the big stick issues out on paper. So there wasn't a whole, you know, there wasn't a lot structurally that I felt like we needed to do, which was good. So yeah, but we have.
So I didn't, I didn't leave any comments or make any changes when I went through it. I was just like, like giving over it just for the purposes of the discussion. I think there are some like little like typo things throughout, just to, that I didn't, I didn't fix them as I went. I guess I was thinking that other people were going to be in there. Just wanted to flag that for whoever.
Yeah, like, you know, like with a lot of working documents, it became sort of a bloodbath of red line changes. So sometimes those, those little typos work their way in there and I just, nobody sort of worked those out. Obviously, you can go in there, shore that stuff up. I just find the sort of, if there are sort of larger structural or sort of conceptual issues that we wanted to talk about, then we can do that. Okay.
I guess I can mention my one comment in there, although I think there's probably not a whole lot to do about it now. I was just thinking that we have the map section in each of these chapters below maps and tables. And I didn't, I, I just didn't want it to be repetitive for the sake of gravity, because we're trying to keep these brief. So I was just thinking, if we did have the map section at the bottom, which I think we, or sorry midway, which I think we will, if we wanted to put a couple of examples up towards the introductory part, I think that would be fine. I think we should just keep them like, super brief, like kind of images and captions underneath rather than in paragraph form.
Yeah, that sounds great to me. Agreed.
Yeah, I think I was hoping when we do the, the website version, that, that those maps that are in that third section actually kind of get inserted into the document in certain relevant places. We wouldn't repeat them. I don't entirely think, in some cases, maybe we have to have a separate section for just some maps if we've just got them. But I'm hoping that they'll be more integrated into that, into that page.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great idea. I like, I think it would like, if they were kind of integrated into the, near the appropriate paragraph, it would help just visually look nice and give, you know, nice examples, break up the text. So I think that's great. Oh, and there is one thing we did not fix. I'm seeing right now, it's right there where I've highlighted. I can try to figure out which is more appropriate. It may be that both are appropriate and we'll just have to pick one, but I can try to ask.
Okay, so we're ready to pass this one along too?
Mike, Mike, how are you feeling about it?
I mean, I've always been good with you guys going, your, your edits that you guys have going through them, so. I didn't see anything that was really major changes anyways, when I read through it. I actually, I actually put the other one kind of side by side to go and see, most of the edits were relatively minor.
I don't think substantively, we did a whole lot, mostly just kind of wording and.
Statistical stuff.
So yeah, thanks again, Mike, for a good, solid first draft. Very helpful to have your perspective on what is important to capture.
So, so you're good, Mike? You don't need any, anything more?
No, like, and I think, like I said, I think as we get going, you know, we're going to have other times we can get in here. If we, once we've put all this together, we're going to all have another time to go through it and start to see where things don't line up. And so far, I've been pretty happy with, you know, we've been able to meet our target lengths for the most part. You know, trying to keep it relatively short, trying to keep it targeted. So I think we're doing, I don't know, I think I've been happy with, with the way the chapters have gone so far. With the first drafts and then the edits, I think it comes out really, comes out well.
Okay. Do we have any more planning commission things to discuss about it?
So one thing I'm just thinking, sorry, I'm thinking out loud not to belabor this, but I was just making sure. So we pulled out the goal about maintaining relationships. I don't believe anything that's specific is written in here. So I think that still works. And then the implementation, I don't think we get as specific as like the forestry plan either. So if that were to change later, I think there would have to be a significant change to the goals and the implementation strategies in like, once we get public input for us to have to come back and change this section. But good to just keep in mind, if we do get that.
Yes, that's a good thing to think about. Yeah, I should have quick circ, search for anything involving sequestration. Looks like it's not mentioned.
Yeah, I don't think so. And we talk a lot about volunteers, which like implies a relationship building, but we're okay.
I mean, it's all broad brush stroke stuff.
Yeah.
But it's, it's all, it's, it's couched well in, you know, the underlying goals and strategies.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't try and I haven't, and any of them tried to have a recitation of every strategy. I tried to hit, these, these are the biggest, most important ones, and there are going to be some other ones. You know, even like in historic resources, there may be a study of something that is a lower priority that doesn't get mentioned. And I think that's fine, in my view, I thought that was fine, just to give people the highlights of the most important strategies that we're working on.
Okay, great. I, by the way, thanks, the, thanks to the working group for all the work you put in on this. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the chapter as it is?
I'll move to approve the chapter.
Where are you on?
I can second.
Second by Marcella. Those in favor of approving the chapter, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. Chapter approved. Need to through that. So it looks like we have quite a bit of time left, but only have one thing more on the agenda. I think I'll, I'll briefly, just to be able to time anyway, I skimmed over the comments from the chair part, but there is one thing I should make everyone aware of, and that's that I'm, I'm meeting with this staff person from CJAC, probably tomorrow. CJAC is the, let me read it, just.
Community justice.
The, yes, Social and Economic Justice Advisory Committee. They, they had a report from a consultant. They're, they're working with a consultant to do a report and they've, they've got that back. And I guess some of their, the feedback from the consultant is that there's, big shocker, there's social economic justice issues maybe surrounding housing. So they want to, to talk about where, what the housing plan looks like a little bit. And so, so I'm going to have kind of a preliminary meeting. We haven't gone over housing yet. And, you know, so, so it might be a little bit premature, but, but I'll try to let Shayna, who's a staff member, know about how I think it's going to go. And then maybe I'll circle back to, to CJAC once we've done more with the housing. But it, some of this discussion or some of the stuff in that report might inform, you know, when we, when we get to working on the housing chapter soon. I think that'll probably be our next chapter.
Yeah.
Yeah. So housing's coming up, CJAC's going to be updated. That's it though. So the next thing on the, go ahead, Ari.
Well, I was just going to ask, I feel a little bit lost in terms of, can we just review what need, what needs to still, what chapters we still need to review and then what the processes after that a little? That would be helpful for me.
Yeah, good question. If, unless Mike has it off the top of his head, I can pull up the Google Drive. What we have on the Google Drive, and Mike, feel free to interrupt me if you've got better. We, we have arts and culture chapter, which we have not worked on, which was kind of optional. It's not a statutory mandated one, and it's not one that's been done before, but we had discussions about the need for that. There's a community services chapter, which is similar thing. I don't think that's statutory, but, but I think we do have some materials for that.
Yeah, the, community services would be a requirement.
Okay.
And that's, it's got a lot of moving parts and I'm still working on it. So we did parks or we did some preliminary look at the parks plan, but we also need to do recreation, cemetery, senior center. And then one more. So that our community services department has, I think, four, five pieces to it, so.
Okay, so that, that's, that's good enough. That's, it's not as small as I first imagined. It's a little bit of a big area. So, so those two to do, we've not done economic development, that's a big one coming up. We've done energy, we have not done governance, but that, a lot of that's going to be city council, I believe. We've done historic.
That's not required.
Okay.
But we may do it, but it's not required.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm of the attitude, like, the more, the better, I mean.
Sorry, Mike, which, which one's not required?
Governance is not a requirement.
So yeah, I mean, my attitude is, it's nice to have these extra ones in there, because it's, it's guidance for city council, right? So having, having some documents, have some planning in place for some of these other areas is better than not having it. Historic resources, we've done, housing, we're doing next. There's the implementation plan.
That was actually the first one that we did, that was the little bit of that white paper on butterflies, rainbows, and unicorns. And, you know, we're going to organize our plan. So that's kind of, actually, it's kind of the kickoff of all of the other implementation plans.
Land use, which is going to be big for us. Natural resources is done, public safety, we have not done. Knock on wood, but I don't, I, oh, anyway, whatever, it's one we have to do. Six, that's, that's six chapters. Transportation, we've done. And utilities, we've not done. So there's, so there's seven chapters that we have on the Google Drive. to do. And we have done one, two, three, if you count implementation plan, four, five of them so far. So not quite halfway. And some of the chapters that we still have to do are things where we're not able to lean on an existing city committee as much, like arson culture and land use in particular are going to be more work for us. So we won't. We won't have the.
There's some people on arts, right? And then we can get Montpelier Live to help us with culture and we obviously there's more than just Montpelier Live, but.
The what we have for arts and cultures, we have a a pub. We have a public art commission.
Yeah.
I've I've talked to them a couple of times, but as far as I know, they don't have anything like directly to feed us. But they definitely we definitely have them as as a resource for input. I actually threw together, it's probably, I don't know if it's been a year, but it's probably was about a year. I threw together kind of an outline where I I went and spoke with some local artists and things to get an idea of what some of the public perceived need is. So we have, we have that outline. We and I've had discussions with the public arts chair at that time as well. We have that. But yeah, there's still there's still more. Haven't I haven't been a touch on Montpelier Live about it. So does that answer your question? Looks like we've got about seven more to go. Five down.
Yeah, that's helpful. And then and then once we've approved all these, we will put it out on the website for public comment. Is that our plan?
Yeah, the plan is we'll start developing the web pages. But exactly how that's going to work, we kind of lost a lot of our funding with the way the 2020 kind of went through. But we still are. I'm still hopeful we'll be able to get somebody to help us kind of put these things into the separate web pages and start to build this out. So that way we can start to get public comment on there'll be the the chapter, which will kind of get inserted as a page with an attachment to the, you know, to the more of the Excel, the Excel table would be something people could go kind of click on to get get down to that level.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. That answered my question. Just helpful to have a reminder of where we are for me.
Yeah, and a number of these I have, like both the housing pieces, I think, are in there. So the number of chapters that are ready for review, I was working today on economic development. And I've been trying to work on some of the community services to start to get those wrapped up. Public safety, they they have they've had a public safety committee for the past year. Their report just came out last week. So I really haven't been trying to get to kind of get in the way of what they're working on right now. And with the new police chief, I just was kind of giving a little bit of room for them to kind of get what they're doing. Get caught up. Like they had to hire about four or five different police officers at the same time. So they've been pretty busy just getting their own stuff done. But I think I think once I get to sit down with them, it won't take long to develop their plan. Because they already have so much background information. It's not like I've got to find out from them what their mission is. They've they're an organization that is very mission driven, so I don't think it's going to be hard to to develop. I think it's just a matter of getting all the pieces because we've got a police, we've got fire, we've got the emergency dispatch, and we have community justice. So we kind of have these four different entities that kind of have to get fit into that chapter.
There's also the the new oversight board, right?
Yeah, I don't know. Is that is that a permanent board or was that an ad hoc one time board to do this plan? And I should probably know that answer, but I don't.
I don't know. I talked to the mayor at some point about it, but she didn't. I don't think she specified. But but I was just I was just saying that there may be a stakeholder that we could use.
Yeah, there's a couple of them. And so I've been working on them in in there. So if people pick through and open them, you might see some some pieces of things that are in draft form, because I've been working on utilities and facilities is actually pretty close to being done as well.
We we have a working group for economic development and we and I'm on it. We have we have not met actually. So I'll try to schedule something with that group. But it's good to know we have other a few other, you know, things to look at before we get to that.
Yeah, when you do that, try to invite me in because I think there's a lot to the economic development that needs to get adjusted. The original one was done by MDC, the Montpelier Development Corp., and they're no longer in existence. So we I've I've been kind of going through. That's why I've been going through to try to do another revision of the existing draft, because I don't think it's relevant anymore. So.
Okay, I'll try to set up a meeting with that group like in October. I don't think we'll need it before then, because we that's only going to be two or three planning commission meetings away.
Hopefully I'll have a draft by then for you, something to for you guys to chew on.
Does anyone here like remember if you're on that? I want to say they're John or Aaron's on it, but maybe Barb is the other person. Oh, I maybe I should have led with this. Yeah, Mike knows. I guess I guess I didn't prepare my comments very well, because I guess there were some things and now a stream of consciousness. Barb's planning to leave the planning commission. So.
Reappointments, reappointments come in October, and I think she's just not going to be asked to be reappointed. So there's going to be an open seat and some of you may have also gotten notices from Mary Smith that may have said you're due to get reappointed.
So if we didn't get those, are we not due to get reappointed?
I'll double check to make sure.
Like half of us are this every other year, right?
Yeah, no, I think you and I are both in the clear this year.
Okay.
I think maybe Ariana is too, I think. I remember correctly.
I don't remember. That feels like a long time ago when we talked about that.
Last fall or something. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I I. I'm just gonna keep showing up until somebody tells them.
Right.
You have to show up until you find a replacement.
That I wasn't that I wasn't reappointed. Somebody let me know.
I I didn't receive a letter or anything, but I actually don't know. Planning Commission time passes really weirdly. Anyway, I think I've been here for like ever, and it feels like I've not been here long, but.
Can you pull that for us somewhere, Mike? Does that live somewhere? The whose terms are up one?
Yeah.
I thought it was on the website.
Yeah, I think it is.
I'll see if I can find it really fast.
No, it doesn't have the dates.
Okay.
Yeah, I love it. We don't even know if we're even on the planning commission.
We're all still here.
We have no idea. We're like, I don't know, maybe I'm not even on.
Maybe they replaced me. I don't know. No one else showed up.
We're like robots that keep doing our task because no one told us that it was pointless to stop. Yeah. Maybe we should find out about that. Maybe just just well, yeah, okay. Will you find out about that for us, Mike?
Yeah, I was just trying to do a little bit of.
Doesn't look like it's publicly available, but whoever sent the letter to Barb will know.
How does finding new people kind of go about happening? Do we? Do we just post it? When when will we have it? When can we can we reach out to people?
I think Mary will be doing the posting for it. And if you have people who are interested, you should have them let Mary know or know, and I can forward it up to Mary. So we can make sure that they get on the list of get because I think there's a an application you're supposed to fill out a little thing of who you are and why you're interested in participating or volunteering.
Yeah, there is. Okay. And so that should that should happen now?
Uh, yeah, because I think the appointment is coming up in October. So, okay, here we go. Planning Commission expires in twenty one is John Adams, Aaron and Ariane. Looks like Barb was actually good for another year, so she'll be. It expires in September, so I was wrong. So it actually is coming up very, very soon.
Wait, what?
I'm while I'm looking at who's in the annual report. So it looks like it's supposed to be John, Aaron and Ariane and not Barb, but it sounds like Barb is going to be resigning anyways.
Did Barb get a letter?
I don't know. It sounded like it.
I'm pretty sure I got. I'm pretty sure I was contacted last fall to be reappointed for two more years. And I did the application.
Maybe the maybe the dates are on. I'll double check the dates.
I think I think what happens is is the the reappointment, like applications are due in the fall, but the actual reappointment doesn't happen till like January. It's something like that.
Yeah, I think. Well, I think they had they had readjusted it with a charter change.
Oh.
We had some charter issues a few years.
Nice knowing you all. I guess I'm not going to be around. I didn't get a letter.
Yeah, I will definitely follow up with Mary to find out what the story is with everybody's reappointments. Maybe her official list is different than what's in the annual report.
Okay, and I just looked up what Barb said. I don't think that she received an individual notification. I think she just she saw that it's that the there had already been posted something from the city about looking for planning commission, people interested in planning commission. I guess in anticipation of these other seats, in case maybe someone didn't decide to just try to stay. Or if the city council hates somebody. I guess I shouldn't be flipping about that. But so I think that's what Barb saw. I said, I don't think that her term is supposed to be up, but maybe she's planning to resign anyway. Is there a city council like an agenda coming up that's going to have planning commission appointments at it?
That was a little bit of what I was looking to see. It doesn't look like there's a meeting coming up this week. So that probably means their next meeting's not till next week. So the agenda won't be out till the end of this week. But I will let everyone know if there's if it's on the agenda, I can let them know to to hold off or to make sure that all of you guys have a chance to apply. I thought they were going to send out information to everybody who's already on the boards, but I think one of the differences is you know, I think three years ago we had Jamie and then two years ago we had Jasmine and then this year we have Mary. And I think that the fact that we've gone through a few administrative people, we've lost a couple of our our processes that we usually got used to, simply because people aren't familiar with all of the things that we used to do. So I may just have to follow up to make sure that she's notifying everybody.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
You know, we will at least have one open seat. So if you do know anybody who is interested or might be interested, certainly let them know.
We got to make sure we let John know.
Yeah, I'll let I'll let all of you know what the status is of everybody. So you'll know if you're good or not for this year.
And I would think it would be a good if you do. If your seats up and you're reapplying, it probably would also be good to go to that city council meeting, at least for the appointment part.
Yeah, and they do have, they do go hybrid. So if you are in a position where you would like to just go through and make sure you meet with them and talk to them. You can always let them know you're going to be on Zoom and they can get you in that way, even though it's a live meeting, you can still zoom in from home if if you have childcare or other things that make that difficult to do.
Okay, thanks, everybody, for the good questions and discussion. Feels like I was stumbled upon some important stuff there. Okay, so I'm going to move along with the agenda. So we we need to just discuss a way to review some proposed changes to the zoning bylaws that that came from the public. You know, we get these time from from time to time and, you know, we don't want it to distract from the city plan work because we're making pretty good progress with that, but like, but we can't afford to to lose too much time. So Mike had mentioned us doing a working group type approach. And then in in hopes of it shortening the amount of time that we use a planning commission meeting to discuss it. I thought that maybe more people than just a subgroup would want to be involved. So I was thinking we could just schedule a different planning commission meeting on a different day that's posted. Handle it completely at that meeting. That way we won't have to kick it like if it were a working group, we'd have to kick it over to a regular meeting. But if we just had a meeting, we wouldn't have to do that. And obviously, we just need just a forum. So it's not like if there's a problem with someone not be able to go or if they're not interested or whatever, then it's not going to kill it. So those are those are the two kind of ideas floating around. I I think it's tidy to just get it out of the way and having a side meeting. But what do you guys think?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
With what?
Oh, with having and I I I agree with you. It's sort of like a special or from what I understand, like a special planning commission, not on a Monday night. We don't interrupt the forward flow in the city plan, but we review zoning changes. And as long as we have a forum like, you know, if somebody isn't interested, they don't have to come, but probably most of us are interested in reviewing zoning ordinance changes.
I I like the the subcommittee approach, like put out there just because I think it makes a couple of things is one, if you're going to have, it's going to wind up having some people have to be in a side meeting anyway. Those that are really invested and interested in the zoning issues can be a part of that subgroup. You can really do a deep dive with fewer cooks in the kitchen. I think have a more focused sort of look at those zoning changes and then make a recommendation to the larger group and be able to sort of give a presentation as to what the working group recommendation is. And the rest of us, you know, that are just sort of a part of the larger group and the regular meeting can ask any follow up questions and we can have that discussion. But I think I think it usually helps to have a subcommittee of folks that have taken a really close look at these things and have sort of looked at it from a variety of angles and then bring it to the commission. It as opposed to having everybody just have a side meeting and everybody sort of getting up to speed on the zoning change all together. Just feel like in those instances, we spend a lot of time just sort of sifting through and trying to figure out what exactly it is. Whereas I think if we have a subcommittee, I mean, obviously those folks are going to have that get up to speed on it as well. But when we have the larger vote amongst the group, you've got a really sort of well focused and well understood group of, you know, a group of people that really have a firm understanding. you've got a really sort of well-focused and well-understood group of, you know, a group of people that really have a firm understanding of what the, what the change is and have recommendations. I just think that's a little more efficient. But I, I don't, I'm not opposed to the other idea either. I mean, I think that has merit too. I just think the working group approach, um, just it sort of helps protect the people that are, that are, that want to do that work can certainly join the subcommittee. Those that are not, are less interested don't have to be part of that, uh, for a special meeting.
Yeah, one concern I have about doing, like, doing working groups on things like this is that it's just, it seems actually overall inefficient. Like, in theory, it sounds like maybe there's some, like, advantages to it, but what you end up doing in reality is just having the same discussion twice. Um, and just having, I, I don't think it's too, we don't have that big of a group where I don't, I don't feel like it's, uh, too many cooks in the kitchen to have, like, uh, to have six people instead of four people in the discussion. We, especially for avoiding having the discussion twice.
I, I think today's experience with the way we have had the working group do the work, make a presentation to the group today, and it lasted twenty minutes. It sort of shows that it's not an inefficient approach, but.
I actually, but I actually don't think that the approach is that efficient that we took today. I think that a lot of, there was a lot of people time spent on it, more, more than normal.
I, I wonder if it would be helpful to see specifically what we're looking at first. So we know, I, is it, do we have, like, the Excel file spreadsheet where we're going through, like we've done in the past, of different specific areas that have come up within Mike's shop? Like, what are, where are we at with these changes right now?
Uh, right now, they're being reviewed by, um, by Meredith. I, I collected them all together. We've got some final proofing to do, but there are a series or a set of, uh, small map changes, or larger map changes, depending on how you're looking at it. So that's, that's one group are kind of the map change groups. There are, um, a set of new regulations, so we've got some new planned unit development rules that are general. As you know, we've got a whole bunch of these very specific, um, new neighborhood. And what we have is some requests that people just go through and say, well, we, we just need some basic, either what we call condominium-type PUDs or just a general PUD. So we drafted some PUD language that's just general. There are no density bonuses. Just if you want to cluster some lots, you've got the ability to do it without having to do the really detailed ones, which give density bonuses and other benefits. So we've got some language there that has to be reviewed, and then we've got a lot of these little technical ones that have come up where for administrative reasons, you know, how we, how we define accessory structures. So generally, if something is a part of the structure, you know, it's not accessory. So you've got a porch, the porch is part of the structure. But if you look in one part, decks, even though they're attached to the structure, are considered accessory structures, so they can meet the accessory structure setback, even though they're attached to the, so we kind of had some these definition things where it's like, well, technically, if it's just the deck, then it's, it's accessory. If you put the roof over it, then it becomes part of the structure. Um, and we just had to make sure that we were consistent on, on how we defined it, because in one part, we talk about accessory structures, and in another part, we talk about principal structures. And that starts to become really important when we start getting into things like somebody wanting to put an accessory apartment in a garage. And then you're like, okay, now we're starting to get to a little bit more gray area, because now you know, we, we really have to start talking about whether that garage becomes a primary structure, because it's got primary uses and those types of pieces. So we just had to go through those, those little technical things that will need, that's one of the few places that need to get cleaned up. Front yard setbacks or front yard fences are another one that have had some issues. So we just have a few little corrections. I think those are pretty easy. We can get through those pretty quick. I think the, the longer ones are really just an explanation of why. Um, and then there's one policy one that's in there, and it comes down to setbacks, um, over in the farm and factory, which is over by, um, past the roundabout as you're heading out, Route Two on East Montpelier Road there, that there's a whole set of buildings over in there that are where Cabot and all these industrial buildings are, and they're all zero line setback to the old rail line that was there. And the setback in that district's actually like twenty feet. They're like, well, everybody's zero line, and yet it's going to be twenty feet. Can we be zero? Was the question from the property owner, and, and we can talk about that, and I don't think I would recommend zero. I think I'd recommend five feet. But, um, I think there's some changes we could make to the setbacks in that area. So we had a couple of those little, little ones along those lines, so. But most of these, again, as I said, they tie back to people who've made specific requests about projects. And, uh, so we've got a couple of them that are, that are pending. But I don't think it would take more than one meeting. If this is not, as, as Stephanie, you probably, you know, you guys remember going through some of these, or the, the first set of lit fixes that we went through probably had a hundred fixes. Then the next set kind of went through and had fifty or sixty, and then, you know, now we're down to these much smaller lists of, of things that I didn't, I haven't put it into an Excel table because it just fit onto a memo outlining ten, I think it was ten changes that we had identified.
So I, I mentioned this before, Mike, but I, I think I am in interested in, for the, for the density-related things to, for us to, to maybe take a look at. Doing something even broader to, to address the density requests that we're getting now, but to also look at something broader than that to reassess how we, how we use density. It's, and it's because in my time here, I've seen people get worked up over density because they think that it's a proxy for, like, the character of their neighborhood, but that's not what it is. And so people don't understand it very well. And then we're always having to adjust it because it is stopping, like, certain development from taking place that we, that's, that's desirable otherwise. So, um, I would be interested in maybe taking a broader look when it comes to those, those parts. And it sounds like, yeah, this list of ten, it sounds like, yeah, we could definitely fill up a meeting with those things.
Can I just, one, one thing about the discussion about the ta, the type of meeting that we would want to have for this? Um, just thinking out loud a little bit in terms of con, like comparing and contrasting the way that we did today's meeting with the subcommittee and the presentation and, um, talking about targeted things versus the way we approached, like, maybe transportation or energy, where we kind of went through the whole chapter together. I'm feeling like there may be a nice way to kind of take the best of both of those two things, because for me, it was, like, I understand what you're saying about, like, okay, we all get together for two hours and we spent, we all spent two hours, or we all get together for two hours and, like, a few other folks do extra hours of work prior. So like, in the end, that might be more hours, but I, I am finding that if the meeting structure that we set up sort of incentivizes no prior work on anyone's behalf, and we walk through everything together, I personally have a much harder time keeping focused and fully understanding what's going on, and so I'm feeling like sort of really strongly encouraged or mandatory pre-work that's sort of well-defined would be really helpful and would help us not, not go through the line-by-line silly stuff in the meeting. It would keep us much more targeted and engaged in the meeting. It would require more hours, I think, but I think the quality would be better, especially in the meeting. Because I have a, I feel like a couple of those meetings before, when we were just going through, I was just really struggling, because I think we all were struggling. I'm just going to say we were probably all struggling. So, um, I feel like there might be a way we can thread this to make it work. I agree that this could probably be handled in a meeting. But I would want everybody and myself included to come with targeted ways to discuss, rather than just be like, okay, Mike, take it away from the top and explain all of this, because I'm not going to be able to do that in one meeting. Not for something as, even if this is small, small potatoes in zoning world, I'm not going to be able to do that on my own in the meeting.
So, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'd like to talk about this too, but, uh, hopefully I don't sound like defensive or touchy or anything, but I, I like the walkthrough approach. For one thing, it's tried and true, like legislatures use this. There is an assumption that people are going to prepare ahead of time. And so the walkthrough doesn't exist just to catch everyone up to where they should be. So like, I've never had that assumption or walking through for that reason. But the, the walkthrough does, like, it does take some time, but it, it makes people, um, consider everything as they go. If you've done research ahead of time and you have your points, like tonight, we just said, do you, do you have some points you want to bring up? And I don't think that that's as conducive for discussion, and I don't think it's as high a quality. I'll be honest. If, if people didn't do work ahead of time, then they had nothing to say tonight, and they didn't read it, and it's definitely lower quality. With the walkthrough, at least people have the opportunity to, um, stop. And, and because things are drawn out as you go. I don't think it takes that much time, and I think it is more thorough. I also think it's more efficient, because you're not, you're having individuals work it on things in the background, but, but you're not having extra meetings with a subgroup on, I mean, the subgroup stuff we've done is fine. But, but, um, the reason why the things work tonight is because we've, you guys had several meetings to, like, to put it in, into, um, shape. But, uh, what I've been doing with the walkthroughs is I've been going through myself and rewriting the chapters and getting them up to shape also. So I'm not seeing a huge difference, other than we're just have, people have fewer opportunities to, like, really stop at every point and, and to, to concentrate on, on things. As far as some of our conversations that get hung up, I don't see that as relating to the approach we've taken. I see that as relating to any individual on the planning commission can choose to be pedantic and, and tie things up if they want to. And if you're walking through it, maybe you're giving them opportunities to do that, but I mean, I don't know. I think some, some preparation ahead of time and some self-restraint are actually, like, the things we're getting at, right?
Yeah, it might be. I just, I think there, we maybe could be, I think we're probably saying the same thing. I think there maybe could be a little bit more of a um, emphasis put on what, you know, what is effective prior work for each meeting. You know, what, what is ineffective walkthrough, like, walking through the chapters and doing typos? I mean, that's painful. That's not helpful.
Yeah, that's why I started, that's why I started, like, just doing it, and so that we're not doing that.
Well, yeah, which, I mean, but still, that puts a lot of extra work on you particularly, and then, you know, I can't read your edits in the middle of the meeting while we're going through it. You know, it's, it's I don't know, I feel like there's, there's some, like, we can thread it. I think we can thread it. I get, I get what you're saying about the benefits of, of having a robust discussion, and maybe there maybe we were particularly light tonight, and there's a way to beef it up a little bit, um, based on what we did tonight, but not go quite so deep as some of the previous meetings.
I, I, I think, um, has there been any problematic meetings since I've started, um, doing the edits beforehand?
Can you remind me which one, which ones those were?
The last two or three I did, and before that, we were, um, kind of like not as structured about it. I mean, we, we were still, like, doing some wordsmithing ahead of time, but, but not as not to the same extent, because I, I don't, I think our, our chapter walkthroughs, since I started writing them, we actually haven't had that many comments. And I understand that it's hard for people to read it. That's why, that's one reason why I do read it out loud, so that people know what, uh, what all of that track change stuff is saying.
Yeah, it's better. I still think reading, I am on the side of reading the chapter in the meeting is not, not helpful. I think helpful for strategy is helpful for goals, potentially helpful for some of the zoning stuff. I'm not really sure. I haven't done a whole lot of that with this group myself. Just because we haven't had too much of it, but, um, I don't know, the chapter itself, I don't find, I don't find that to be. It was better after, you know, when we did the pre-editing, but, um, still pretty painful.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's not something that occurred to me as, like, something that's, like, a bad thing, because, I mean, in, in the legislature, they, they read the bill line by line to the committee. It's not to say that the committee can't read. It's just, you know, what's done.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I think, I think, I think for purposes of this discussion, it seems to me that there's like a basic threshold question that needs to be answered before you even get in, you know, stuff, which is like, if everybody here is interested in having a meeting to go through these zoning changes, we can, we can adopt a broader, like, let's have a separate meeting approach. But if not everybody wants to do that, and there's only certain people that are interested in it, I think a subcommittee approach lends itself a little bit better to the process, so. Does everybody on this call want to have another meeting just to deal with the zoning piece and then have a sort of meeting, or you, some of us not want to do that?
Okay, well, yeah, Aaron, Aaron, well, well, the conversation we were having, though, was like, it, it was more, it was more broad for, like, purposes of future meetings to see if, like, people are kind of happy with the way we're doing city plan and, like, walking through it. So we are kind of having two conversations at once, but again, it was worth it, but, um, that, that conversation's worth having, so I don't want to just, like, drop it and, and interrupt it.
The agenda item is whether or not we have a subcommittee approach or something else with respect to the zoning issue.
Yeah, and I probably brought in that, so forgive me for that. I, and on the zoning issue, I think that is sufficiently technical in, in terms, in my world, that I would appreciate having sort of some targeted pre-work, whether it's on a subcommittee or not, and then, um, but I know I'll benefit from hearing us, like, fairly detailed stuff from Mike at that meeting. Um, I suppose in my experience so far, the chapters for the plan and something like zoning are kind of different for me.
Yeah.
I agree with that completely. Yes, I think that's also the approach that I would want.
Cool. So, yeah, it could be, it could be subcommittee, depending on how many of us care to do that part. I just, um.
Wait, Stephanie, can you, can you tell me the part that you're agreeing with?
Yeah, that I, I think for the purposes of zoning and those changes, it makes more sense to have that more detailed overview. And I, it's also hard for me to read the chapters line by line in, and in the full group. It's just hard for me to follow that. Um, it's not the way that I think and learn. So I, it's, it's nice to have someone who is reviewing it a little bit more detailed. We could, we should all be looking at it still and then providing those comments, but but I think, yeah, I agree for the purposes of the zoning, that's, that's a little more particular, and there might be some things where Mike will say, well, this isn't really substantive. It's, it's pretty minor, and maybe we don't have to dig into those as much, but for the bigger things, I think it's helpful to have a, a broader conversation with everybody at a more detailed level.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm not following very well, some, but, uh, I'm, I'm hearing you say that, that not, not a huge fan of walking through the chapters. Right? And for the purposes of the zoning discussion, were you, were you?
I, so I was actually No, I actually had the same thought Aaron did, which is if we all want to do it, let's all do it, and if only three people want to do it, then only three people do it. But I think the threshold is over three, right?
I, I suspect that we all want to do it, which is why I'm fine having this other broader discussion to see, like, what other people's preferences are. But, um, say I, if you're interested in talking about zoning, apart from a regular planning commission meeting, I.
I.
Yeah, um, I mean, that was my assumption all along. So it, so it looks like it makes So it, so it looks like it makes sense for us to just have a meeting because everyone wants to be there anyway.
Could we to the extent it's possible, can we be really, could we be specific about what kind of pre-work would be most effective? I'm a little worried that if I just read the changes, I will be like, I don't know what's going on. If there's any kind of specific, yeah, specific stuff I can read, that would be.
I mean, Mike will have some materials ahead of time. The way this goes is, I mean, he's gonna, he's gonna give us the background in meeting. Like, 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 he's already, he's already, he's already done that for most of these things. He just did a little while ago.
Well, yeah.
But I don't, I don't know how much, like, there's not a whole lot of pre-work other than Mike does for this kind of stuff.
All the candidates statutory construction. You know, just.
Something I haven't read already, Aaron.
I, I put, the memo I put together, which had, which has the 10 changes. It goes through with an explanation of a little bit of the background of what it's about and why the request. So the only thing that's really going to be the kind of the reading the actual zoning changes, the P, the two P U D sections. Because it's just, you know, there's, there's a request to be able to do it. So I've developed two sets of language. So they're just chunks that are separate from the memo. So that'll be the only one that's going to be kind of, this, this is, this is what it says, and this is why it's broke down. But I really haven't gone in to explain it. So that one I might have to go a little more line by line. But the other ones, I think that like the three map changes, I think are pretty straightforward. Once I explain what is the basis behind it. You know, I've taken a screenshot snap of the zoning map to kind of show what it is today and what they proposed to change it to. A lot of times it's an area like, one of them's Harrison Ave, which is over off of Liberty Hooks over to Main on using Whittier. So it's just little, but it's all residential three on all sides of it. But it's residential six and a resident on the street can't do a project because they don't, the, if they're residential three, they could do the project. And they're like, look, we're residential three on Liberty, on Loomis, on Main Street, all over the place. Everything around us is all residential three. Why can't we be residential three? So that's one of the proposals.
Okay, that, that sounds.
Just for an example, it gives you a little bit of a context. I can give you that, and I don't think there's much else that, you know.
That sounds perfect.
Two other changes like that, I kind of explain why they they want the change. Most of the technical changes end up being self-explanatory.
Yeah, okay, perfect, thank you.
And Mike, if we, if I just, I just don't want to, I don't want to make it seem like I'm trying to like pull something when it comes to it. I'm trying to give everyone notice to like, I'd like to get rid of density in some of these places. I mean, do we need to do anything ahead of time to prepare for a discussion like that? Like, would it be helpful for me to write something up and send it out or?
Think to the extent that we get, I mean, that's not the first, your idea isn't the first one that's kind of come out of the planning commission. John has proposed removing parking as a requirement. And we've had some lively policy debates on that as well. So I don't have anything prepared on that. So I think if we want to change something, I think we'd have to at least have have an idea written up of what.
Okay, yeah.
Thinking, and if you want, you and I can sit down and talk separately offline to kind of go through and say, you know, to really drill into it. And then I can give you some ideas that would go through and say, well, you know, here's one approach we could take. And then see what the planning commission wants to do with it.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can plan to do that. It's, it's, it's not technically difficult, the thing I'm talking about. It would be, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood, just having certain neighborhoods not have a zoning cap or a density cap. We already do that in some neighborhoods, as hopefully everyone already knows. Just doing it in more neighborhoods that are that are closer to downtown.
Yeah, and I think that's just a matter of making sure we have our bulk enassing requirements pretty close to what we think is appropriate. Because I think that was, you know, I think we've had this conversation before. The idea is that if you've got the bulk enassing of structures, then whether that building that you see there has four, three-bedroom apartments or eight studios shouldn't make that much of a difference. The building is of identical size and character. It may have some differences in that you may potentially expect to have more, you know, cars, but I'm not sure that would be true. If you're renting a three-bedroom, you may have, you know, multiple adults with multiple cars. It doesn't necessarily mean there are going to be families renting those three bedrooms. You know, I, I lived in a three-bedroom and it was me and two of my buddies from college. So that resulted in three cars, even though it was one three-bedroom apartment. So I don't think it necessarily those those translate straight through. But the idea is from a character of the neighborhood standpoint, we look at bulk enassing rather than the density. Because the density would say you can do the smaller number of two and three-bedroom apartments, but you can't do the eight studios. That's the basic premise.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, you and I can can maybe work together a little bit on so that so that there's more, something more developed.
So do you want to think about maybe a separate meeting that we try to fit in in early October? Is that the thought? I can get you everything in advance and you guys can have a couple of weeks to chew on it.
Yeah, late September, early October. Year one is, how are people's calendars? Does anyone anticipate not being too available during those times? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, middle, middle, second week of October will be a little bit tricky for me. Just because I'll have some presentations at a conference I'll be doing. So I've got to not overload myself for that second week.
Is that the week of the 11th? I'm a little busy that week too.
Yeah, the week of the 11th would be out.
That's out for me too, but everything else looks pretty relatively good.
Is there a day of the week that works better for people?
Do we have to plan around availability of the chambers?
Um, we do. But I might be able to. I'll have to find another room other than the council chambers unless it happens to work out. I'll just have to also work with ORCA to make sure that they're available to to broadcast a special meeting. So we just can't overlap with other broadcast events, so. But I don't think that's, I think there's certain times and days that it's easier. But Mondays and Wednesdays are typically difficult. So we'd probably be hoping for Thursday, maybe. I don't know how everybody's Thursdays are.
Thursday is usually good.
The first two Tuesdays are just CBRPC, so I would prefer Thursday as well.
And the third Thursday, I think, or the third Tuesday, I think, is the Parks Commission. My husband's on that, so that would be hard for me. But Thursday sounds good.
I think Thursday would probably work for me. So Thursday, Thursday in October, maybe the the first Thursday, because you said like after around October 11th isn't good.
Yeah, I could do the seventh Thursday.
Oh, is that what it is, the seventh?
Yeah, that's the first Thursday, yep.
Yeah, that one probably, that Thursday probably won't work for me. The look. It's my anniversary, I don't tend to schedule.
So we won't make it default.
No, I mean, September, September 30th, maybe.
That looks good for me, yeah.
Yeah, September 30th could work.
We'd have to, to get, to get the, what, two weeks notice, we'd have to get that posted. Right?
Yeah, I don't know if this would be the public hearing. We may.
But since it's, I mean, not that it's a public hearing, but just that it's a, it's an open.
Yeah, the open meeting, the open meeting is is 72 hours. So we'll get the notice out as early, as soon as we know it's a good time that works for everybody, including ORCA, then we'll, we'll get it noticed as a special meeting. And then.
Okay, let's tentatively plan for Thursday, the 30th, at 5:30, because it's our normal time.
All right, so I will firm up that with you guys and we'll have one more planning commission before then anyway, so. And then I'll email you guys on the reappointments.
Awesome. Well, it looks like we've got everything done that we planned to. Anyone have anything else to bring up before we adjourn? Okay.
I'll move to adjourn if we're, we're there.
Motion by Stephanie, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Marcella, those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All right, everybody, have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
Mike, thanks for the info on the water park.
Oh.
That was, I was like surprised, but also like, oh, of course, all of these things would need to be taken into consideration. So I'll just keep thinking about it.
It actually made it onto city council's priority list. And I don't know how it's, but they meant to do a strategic planning thing last week or two weeks ago. And they, and on Thursday, when we, I think though, you know, there's going to be, it's going to come up in conversation when we start talking about dam removal again. That same conversation about water parks is going to come back up and have a creation as a key pillar of our economic development plan, you know, and suddenly this conversation is going to up and we'll be back to. This is great, would love to support it if we could do some feasibility studies first that would actually prove that it's okay to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's, that's the trick. But yeah, it's, it's, it's been an interesting idea that just needs it needs a champion to kind of get it to go.
Yeah.
And it's a big project. It's one of these ones I I've tried to tell people when, when, when it comes to these big projects. You know, it got to think in about three years, takes about three years to do a big project.
I would think at least, I mean, even just the thought of like, not even with ownership or environmental impact issues, just thinking about like, where would be a put-in and where would be a take-out? Like, the space along the river is, that's, that's just a big question in and of itself.
Yeah, and then a lot of times when I talk to people, they're always like, oh, just get in there, rip these things out. I'm like, you really got to think probably this is a three to five-year project to, to, from, from the idea to actually big ribbon cutting is probably in that three to five-year window.
Yeah.
Sometimes people don't have the bandwidth to champion something that long, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's just comes down, if it's a council priority, it can happen. And if it's not a council priority, we don't, won't have the resources to put behind it to make it happen, so.
Right, right. Well, I appreciated the background, that was helpful.
Yeah, all right, have a great night.
You too, see ya.